Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Raymond Skinner and I'm chairman of the D C H A Board of Commissioners. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular monthly meeting of the D C Housing Authority. And it's being held today, December tenth, twenty twenty five. This meeting is being held via Zoom video conferencing. And some board members are in person and some members are joining us via Zoom. And the time is one oh two P M. I'd like to first ask for a moment of silence to allow for personal reflection. Thank you. So as as usual for all our meetings, we've invited members of the public to sign up to speak via our website or for those who would just like to view the meeting can do so via our D C H A website linked to our Facebook Live page. The Board of Commissioners also welcomes input on matters of public concern and offers you today an opportunity to express your views during the public testimony portion of this meeting. However, we do require that members of the public who attend our meetings abide by certain rules of decorum to allow the board to complete its business. For this virtual meeting, D C H A asks that you remain silent and muted until you are instructed to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive conduct or loud threatening or abusive language during the meetings. This includes any loud outbursts or shouting during times when you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed from the virtual meeting. Serious or repeated violations of the rules may result in you being barred from speaking at future meetings. However, we do appreciate your interest in the business before us today. And I want to thank you in advance for abiding by these rules of conduct. So for the record, I want to acknowledge that the board is kind of in an unusual situation today. The emergency legislation under which we operated in the last couple of months expired on December the third. However, the council did pass another emergency bill to extend us on December the second, but it has not yet been transferred transmitted to the mayor for her signature. So it can't take effect. Also, the rental act, which provides the the permanent legislation for the board is still undergoing congressional review. So that's still not in effect. Essentially, today we're operating as the Starboard under temporary legislation that was passed earlier this year. So just to refresh, the Starboard had eleven members, nine voting members, two non-voting members. So at the moment, we have two vacancies. So we have, today we're operating with seven voting members, just to be clear. So we need four members to constitute a quorum. So at this time, I'd like to to ask for a roll call vote to determine, make sure that we have a quorum.
Mr. Chairman, before we do the roll, can I just to clarify, the reason we're in this situation is because the the government shutdown prevented the House and Senate being in the same in session at the same time that would have allowed the rental act into taking effect, right? So I think that's why we're in this situation.
Well, I think technically the rental act might not have taken effect until about a week later from today. I think it just, and and the council tried to act, but it just, you know, to to sort of with a stopgap. But it it just, I think the timing is.
But if they, if this House and Senate had been in session during the government shut shutdown, those days would have run, wouldn't they have?
I think so, but we may have still been a few days short, I think.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So roll call vote.
Sure, sure, no problem. Denise Blackson.
Present.
Thank you. Rosa Burbage. Leroy Clay.
Present.
Do Rosa raise her hand?
Oh, does she raise her hand? Okay, I'm going to acknowledge your hand raised, Commissioner Burbage, as being present. Leroy Clay, I'm sorry, go back. Thank you. Jim Dickerson.
Present.
Thank you. Ronnie Harris.
I'm present.
Thank you. Chris Murphy.
Present.
Thank you. Jennifer Reed.
Present.
Thank you. Teresa Silla.
Present.
Thank you. And Chairman Raymond Skinner.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to call for the minutes of the November twelfth Board of Commissioners meeting. Kim, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If you're not going to get a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 The the minute stand approved as presented.
Mr. Chairman, could one, one issue related, this is a minor issue, but I just wanted to get on the record. In tab eight, the they have the follow up chart to the the public comments at our last meeting. And I I I was just reviewing it last night. And I think the what was what was summarized for Kelly McShane's comments were a little off. Because it 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 talks about Commissioner, Director Pettigrew clarifying that DHS and D C H A operate independently and D C H A cannot by press procedures governed by DHS. I I that, while that is true, I think the spirit of that exchange was more about continuing to collaborate to try to get the agencies to streamline how they work together and improve that process. And I just thought that comment was like, the way it was described was just a little bit misleading. So just wanted to state that for the record. Thank you.
We're going to move on to the Executive Director's Report. Executive Director Pettigrew is under the weather, so he is not with us today. I don't know if he's he's on the screen. No, I don't see him. But we have.
Yes, I am.
We have an able substitute Deputy Executive Director, Nicole Whitcliff.
All right, thank you. And I apologize, my voice is still in and out. But on a few highlights we'll we'll talk about here. Of course, our property management operations side of the house, the occupancy remains the same over the months. We are continuously turning units. And as you know, with bond funds coming in, we have the first nine properties that the teams continue to meet with the residents and resident council on those. So we also, on the voucher side of the house, as you'll see, we're pretty much being fully utilized on the local vouchers. We are fully utilized on the federal side. Through attrition will get us back to level out at a hundred percent. So that's just great of the teams have been working closely together to increase the occupancies. Also, on our resident services side, I were happy to say that the A T P program had their graduation last Friday, which is great. Also, C three cares has been in to administer COVID shots, flu shots for employees and residents. And they are actually visiting different sites to be able to administer these shots as well. Many events continuously happen on our resident services side of the house, whether it's for self-sufficiency or other events. The luncheon for our seniors, the holiday luncheon for seniors also took place in the last few weeks, which is great. And of course, the biggest, one of the biggest things that the team continues to again work on is our just our redevelopment efforts for the I R B properties, preparing for the next steps of now so developers, speed developers coming in in addition to preparing to meet with the residents to build out our scopes and hopefully get the Rad conversions across the finish line next year, early next year. Questions?
Questions.
Lots of good stuff to to report. I just want to really call out Anton and his team because the voucher success just leaps off the page. It's really, it would just come so far in there. So really want to acknowledge him and his team. It's great.
So speaking of successes, the the agency is in the process of recovering, preparing what we are we are calling an impact report. So it's been two years since Keith and Nicole came in and brought in a new leadership team to the department. And they really wanted to highlight all of the the successful things that have happened over that two-year period. So shortly, we will be releasing this impact report, which essentially highlights what has happened over the last two years. And specifically focuses on the recovery plan. As if you may remember, that was issued about a year or so ago. So it highlights the objectives, goals that were in the recovery plan and and talks about how we've met most of those goals. So Nicole, can you just talk a little bit about what what we can expect to see in the impact report?
Sure. So hopefully by the end of the week or early next week, we'll put out the impact report. And as Chairman said, we are a year and a half into our recovery plan with the Pettigrew administration being here for two years. So I I won't do a full spoiler alert because you have to read the eighty-five page document. However, but some, so a few highlights. And I and I and this doesn't take away from all the great things that every department and and the agency has done. But just, I'll just point out a few great things. So of course, as we just talked about, the utilization rate has increased greatly on the both sides of the house. On the federal side of the house, local vouchers, federal vouchers, fully utilized or overutilized slightly on the federal side and and almost if not there, fully utilized on the local side. So again, shout out to our Housing Choice voucher team and all the efforts. And that included opening the seven oh two office and two other satellite offices so that we were more people facing, right? To be able to increase customer service, we know we still have ways to go. But again, the team has come a long way. In addition, on the property management side of the house, we turned over a thousand units, right? We came in and there was thousands of units offline. We were able to walk units, assess them, prioritize how many we could turn either quickly or in thirty, forty-five or several months to be able to get online, to pull individuals off the waitlist to get housed, but also to transfer families. There were in other units that needed to get in a better situation on housing. So that was great. And we're continuing to turn those, turn those units on the property management side. A huge thing that happened, as everybody may remember, and and our Langston residents had to endure this was the power outage, right? In twenty twenty-four, September twenty-four, the grid went at Langston. This really meant that the power was now off Pepco's grid, so we had to bring generators in. And for approximately a year, our teams, construction and property management teams were on call twenty-four seven for a year in case the generators went down to get them back up. The residents had to endure this, so we would bring in food. We just try to do whatever we can to make their home continue to be a home during during that year, a year. So that was great. We are now back online. We have a new or rebuilt switchgear there and we're back on Pepco's grid. And that happened around August of 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 that year. So again, shout out to the team for getting that done. Quickly, public safety, our public safety team has been out doing a lot of community policing, events, working with our youth and everything else. So that's been big. And also our rebuilding communities. You know, Director Pettigrew have that thought of the block parties coming back again. And I have to say that these have been great, successful. Residents are coming out, community providers coming out and just that family feel coming back and hopefully building the trust amongst this administration that's here. And last but not least, will be all the section eighteen and Rad applications that have gone in and that are also now getting to a point with the I R B funds, getting many of those, the first nine within the next year or so, across that finish line of a full rehab conversion and a conversion from public housing to our project-based vouchers side of the house. So just a few highlights there and then.
Can you talk a little bit about some of the, it says infrastructure improvements like I T work? Because I know we've done a great job in really upgrading our our I T situation.
So of course, from our Yardi side of the house, just a lot of different platforms have come in from the I T D and are seeking more of Yardi or just other individuals.
Whatever.
Yep, so.
Personnel.
Yeah, on on that side, it has been, well, gosh, we brought in so many different software packages that helps our team. We had H R conversion that happened from an older antiquated system now to another system that tracks a lot. We've got the Yardi system that the authority has been on purchase. I don't, I can't even remember how many years ago, but now we're up and running, almost fully running in every area of the house. So now we're not utilizing more than one software. On our finance side, that was huge because we had a older software and we're trying to use a new one. Everyone now is now fully converted on these systems. We've got a lot of file things going on through Yardi. So now our residents or landlords don't have to continuously have to call in or come to the office. They're able now to log in and utilize that to be able to reach us to do a lot of different functions for the residents and the landlords and also just for our staff.
So again, on on behalf of the board and myself as chair, I just want to commend the team for all the 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 great work they've done over the the last two years. And but we're not done yet.
Not done.
There's still, there's still more to go. We still, we still have some issues that we're trying to address. So I know you're going to be working hard to to do that. Any, any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, Commissioner Dickerson, I just want to give a shout out to the staff and to the board and to everyone involved. This has been, this is is a long journey. It's a never-ending journey. But it's very important to not just keep focused on all the things that are wrong, which we have to address, which there are things that are not there. But at the same time, stop and take a minute and to celebrate that which we have accomplished. And this is a beautiful, wonderful report. And I wanted to just add my congratulations to everyone.
Anyone else? If not, we're going to move to our next agenda item, which is the testimony, a public testimony. So we'll start as as usual with testimony from residents. Everyone will have three minutes to speak and you can speak on any issue that you would like. You know, I would ask that we really stick to the three-minute timeframe. We have a lot of people signed up to provide testimony, so we want to make sure that everyone gets an opportunity.
First, we're going to call Crystal Wilson. Crystal Wilson. I'm going to move forward. Next, we have Jamea Johnson. Ms. Johnson, we just added you as a panelist. Star six, meet yourself so that you can relay your testimony.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good afternoon. Oh, I'm here. Hold on one second. I'm just trying to. Okay. My name is Jamaya and I'm I'm present today to represent Ms. Pamela Germany and speak on her behalf. After witnessing not only her current health conditions, but also the condition she's being forced to live at at the Nanny Helenborough at forty-eight hundred, I can confidently say that they are unjust, unfair, absolutely uninhabitable. She does not deserve to live in an environment that threatens her dignity, her safety, or her well-being. And I'm certain that if it was your family member or mine, we wouldn't want them living in those conditions either. To begin, I just want to address some things that I personally witnessed. The trash room is a major issue. Trash remains piled up for days at a time, creating an extremely unsanitary environment. This buildup leads to nets, foul odors, and even maggots. I've seen maggots throughout the building, especially in the lobby. Imagine having to like watch every step you take just to make sure you're not tracking maggots back into your apartment. It's unacceptable and truly disgusting. Toxic tub glazing fumes, strong chemical fumes from tub glazing. Reglazing had filled the building without proper ventilation or warning and extreme danger to someone recovering, well, that has lung cancer. Unscheduled pesticide spraying. Pesticides are regularly sprayed throughout the building without notice, which violates safety regulations and poses a serious health risk to in immunocompromised residents. And after being warned and violated, they continue to do so. She also went through something that no resident should have to ever experience. She lost her first service animal, not just a pet, not just a companion, but the one creature that she depended on for daily emotional and physical support. And this happened because the building sprayed pesticides without any warning, without any notice, without any chance for her to even protect the very animal that protected her. The trauma of that moment is something she still carries. This wasn't simply just about losing her dog. This was the loss of her lifeline, her comfort, her stability, her service animal, guided medical challenges in everyday life. And to have that taken away suddenly and in such a preventable way is heartbreaking and unacceptable. And after her first service animal passed, they still continue to spray the pesticides once again after she received another service animal. And I just feel like it's malicious behavior. Nobody should have to stand in their own home and watch the consequences of a decision they weren't even warned about. And that took like an emotional toll on her. Harassment and retaliation by management, because she chose to speak up about the unsafe conditions and organized residents to advocate for better living standards through a tenant association that she formed. She had been targeted with hostile behavior. Management has shown clear signs of retaliation for efforts to bring attention to the building's violations and protected vulnerable residents like herself. This retaliation has included verbal intimidation and character defamation. She overheard staff and possible others, things like old watcher in effort to discredit or isolate her within the building, stalking, vandalism, and loss of her vehicle.
Can you wrap up? Three minutes are up.
Okay. Noise disturbances and hostile treatment whenever she reports issues. Staff responding being dismissive or aggravated manner, often making it clear that her complaints are unwelcome, violating her reasonable accommodation, busting their feet in the door and putting, I mean busting in on her door and putting their feet there, forcing a unlawful eviction after the judge vacated all erroneous violations against her in an attempt to evict her. And retaliation for tenant advocacy is illegal and ethical and deeply damaging.
So, so Austin, we'll have to cut you off there, but the staff is listening to everything you said and we will have someone follow up. Thank you.
Chairman, just for the record, we don't have any ownership in that property, but it sounds, the team has been speaking. And Carolyn, you'll reach out because if she's a public housing, then we will reach out to her.
And our asset management team, I think.
Yeah, they both have been working out. They actually have.
Okay, so you're familiar with the situation. Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Nashida. I hope I'm saying that right. Nashanta Washington.
Yes, I'm present.
Okay, Ms. Washington, you have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak today. I just want to bring attention to the serious safety and livability issues in apartment building forty-eight hundred, Nanny Helenborough's Avenue where I reside. Although this property is not owned by D C H A, many tenants, including myself, receive housing assistance. These conditions directly impact the health, safety, and stability of residents. And we are just asking oversight and support because the building has become unsafe and unsanitary and far below basic housing standards. So I want to start by the building entry. The front door is frequently broken, allowing unauthorized individuals into the building. The automatic door opener for disabled and elderly tenants are as often not in function, not functioning correctly. Those birds to safety entry. The elevators are frequently out of service, leaving disabled tenants, seniors, and parents with strollers trapped in their homes during this malfunction. The building has no security despite repeated theft and unauthorized entries. Individuals are able to sleep in a common area or attempt to access tenants' units. Many tenants have their packages, mail, and personal items stolen. The entry floor are randomly deactivated without notice, leaving tenants, including myself, locked off for hours long periods of time with compromising our personal safety. Elevator does not display current inspection certificates. Both elevators have been out of service for days or even a full week at a time. And this posed an ongoing risk for tenants who need them for mobility and safety. The trash and sanitation issue. The trash room was closed without proper notice for weeks, leaving tenants without guidance on where to dispose the trash. As a result, the trash has been left in the hallway, common areas, creating major health issues. Pest infestations, infestations, roaches, mice infestation throughout the building. The treatments have been inconsistent or ineffective. Parking lot security, the parking lot gate has been broken for a long period of time, leaving vehicles exposed, but their cars being broken in, sanitized, and damaged. Maintenance delays often go unanswered or severely delayed, or the maintenance staff are not qualified to fix certain issues. So it makes the problem even worse. My A C unit broke one summer through extreme heat and I had to wait over a week for repairs without proper cooling. Also, then units are being repaired and they have to use chemicals, adhesives. Hazardous films, tenants are not notified and it put it, put them at risk of breathing unsafe air. So and also mishandling, excessive items.
Actually, ten, the three minutes are up. And as the previous speaker also mentioned the same property, again, we will follow up.
I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to be in on how this is, what the, so you know, what the actions are to try to address what the tenants are saying here about this property. It sounds like it's a very dangerous place from their point of view right now. I'd like for us to know what the, what we're, what is it? This is not our building, is it? We don't own this building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so it'll take some other measures to deal, help deal with this and agencies. I'd just like to know what the plan is.
Let me start with that.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kenneth Council. Added you as a panelist. Star six to unmute yourself so you can start your testimony. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mr. Council.
Good afternoon. Last Wednesday, December sixth, I believe it was, this District Dig did an article. As you can see, the two panelists before I spoke, speaking, they're speaking about issues. Those are still residents. The thing that I'm trying to find out that doesn't make sense to me is the gaslighting and the things that you all are presenting to the public. But that article opened up eyes and I have to give kudos. I have to recognize two of the commissioners that really helped the residents this year. That's Commissioner Blackson and Commissioner Silla. I thank you both for participating in each month to hear what the leadership was going through and things that we needed. But more, more or less. I want to thank the reporter that brought this matter to hand. No matter how you are, receive it, but that was the same article or paper that brought up the inappropriate of our former board chair of doing contracting. There's a lot of cover-ups and lies that are being happened. And not only that, Nicole, you and I spoke one-on-one last month at the Block by Block about the the budget that I told you I wanted to speak to you on, which you never gave me a call. But since I have you, my question is about the budget. We're at less than ninety days in the new fiscal year, factual. You all are going to give the cost of living increase, but yet you don't have the money. You all have already taken half of the money out of the budget for twenty-six. So I'm trying my best to figure that out, what's happening. Do you got harassment that's being gone, that's being done through the agency? It's on the street how the residents are coming to work and the way they're being treated. Israel is one of them, even the lie that you all are saying about the voucher. It's not true. You're not pulling anything. You're moving residents that's already housed over into the voucher. So I wish you all stopped gaslighting and lying. But the budget itself, please tell me, how is it that you all are going to give a cost of living when you've already taken half of the the budget twenty six money already? That doesn't make sense to me. I'm looking forward to that answer, but it will eventually come out because y'all robbing Paul to pay Peter. Happy holiday.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Council.
And so, Mr. Council, I know Commissioner Blackston was supposed to schedule for us to sit down and have a budget meeting. So I'll circle back with you and her, but yeah, that's how I thought we were going to talk through the budget. Do a meeting through, not the Block by Block, through Commissioner Blackston though. Well, I'll circle back with with you as well.
Next, we have Carmelo Etienne. Carmelo Etienne. Okay, I'm gonna move forward. Next, I had, we have Norman Proppis. I saw Carmelo. I'm gonna come back to you, Mr. Etienne. Let me go ahead and get Norman Proppis. You have just been promoted as a panelist. Star six to unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Yes, um, could you guys hear me?
We can.
Yes, we can hear you.
Um, thank you guys for allowing me to speak. My name is Norman Proppis. Let you guys know I do have an hearing impairment as part of my disability. Um, I like to address a couple couple of concerns that I have, issues with the vacate and with the rental reasonable and the capination. With the vacate, you guys have asked, uh required us to give the current landlord thirty day vacate. When we give thirty day vacate, um, sometimes it overlaps the thirty days to move out. And when we do get the reform back and that time for us to vacate, D C H A is still processing the transfers. So with that, my current situation right now, the landlord is calling me homeless right before Thanksgiving, right after Thanksgiving because I'm supposed to be moving out December the first. So they extended to December the sixth. My house especially wonderful. She's been doing great job, Ms. Amosu. Um, she's been making sure everything is processed correctly. So with that, they've been sending me emails to Ms. Amosu, to Mr. Shaw, Anthony Shaw, and said, you guys are causing Mr. Prost to be homeless. After December sixth, he would be living on the streets of D C because the D C H F L um, the vacate process. Um, so with the vacate, I'm still living at my current situation. And Ms. Amosu be putting the process and she had to extend it to January first. So they are already renting my apartment out to the next tenant to move in. So with that, um, it's been like, I've been being going through a loss of stress with getting called homeless and every email they sent to me, the current landlord is calling me homeless. And with the rental reasonable, when you guys um do the rental reasonable, it's a loss of properties are being renovated, new property moving up uh coming up in different location of the city of D C. And with the renovate their property and the new one, we always get denied. Because in that particular area, the rent, the, you know, the new owners or the new property up is over. Cause of the rental market fair. So that's another distress that people with disability who depend on social security. It stresses all because we have to go and try to find another property when, um, I do know my tab is up. Please give me a little bit of time because of my disability. I had to really, um, process the, you know, go over each topic that I want to talk about and I wish you guys could allow me to speak a little bit more. My concerns out there affect a lot of people with disability, with people who depend on social security.
Chris, we we will have uh the staff follow up with you so you can talk one on one and uh express your concerns and we'll uh figure out how to uh work with you on that.
Okay, thank you guys for allowing me to, um, speak. And I want to thank Ms. Amosu, my house especially, Ms. Bola, who's been doing a great job for me. And my current landlord, who I'm supposed to be moving to her unit, she's awesome. She's a young entrepreneur. Um, she's been doing a great job. She treats me like a family member.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you guys for.
Thank you. So I'm gonna go back to Carmelo Etienne. Uh, and I see you have your hand raised. We're going to promote you to a panelist. Here's, please accept that promotion. And star six, if you're having issues with unmuting yourself.
Okay, can you, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I take out the feedback. Good, good afternoon to everyone. Um, I've been being done wrong. I have a brain tumor and respiratory issues and this past November, my doctor also informed me that I was, um, I was, I'm I'm dying. And we just moved into a house this past August. And what ended up happening is one of your workers by the name of B Hodges passed the place for inspection back in July. We did not have a case plan worker or a home specialist, however you call it in your system. So it was done fraudulently. My call is about proving the fraud in D C H A and sister organization. So the Ms. B Hodges passed the place. I move into the place August, start moving in, the fridge mold out. I don't have a working stove in the, I don't even have a stove in the property. So building, I would try to work with the landlord. We have rats, pests, mold. I called building out, building came out, the first visit, they find the place thirteen thousand and then fractions. Then D C H A came out and the next D C H A agent came out, said, I don't know how you're living in this place with pill paint and everything else that's going on. Lead, lead is going to be found later on. Then he's, he's, he, he put it up that it didn't pass inspection. When it's time to do the follow up, strings were pulled and then it was given back again to Ms. uh B Hodges that came back to do the follow up where nothing was ever fixed. My landlord charged, when we see the place, it was twenty seven hundred, then it jumped to four thousand. Then she settled back down with three thousand, which is not the price we agreed on. When I got my, I didn't get my lease all the way until November trying to get into the doctor. Uh, um, that's when I finally got the lease via email. So I have a paper trail. I called D O E to do an inspection. They didn't want to do it. My landlord is also a federal employee that has pool. So now I signed up, I actually signed up for this meeting through Department of Building that just shut down my place two days ago. So the O T A just put me in a hotel yesterday. I, I, I hired a mold, um, people to come out. They came out. The mold that's in the house is at thirty five hundred hazardous. It's on the paper. I have paper trail for everything, but your agent by the name of Gigi called me, want to know what am I going to talk about in this meeting? Then last night, I got another agent from a two oh two number that called me again to want to know what am I going to talk about in this meeting, which is this fraud that's taking place. And I have a six year old. The home have lead, spiders, rats, you name it. The door don't have a strike plate, but how does it pass inspection? There's, and it was in a flat fire that was not disclosed. I know I'm out of time. I'm just about to wrap it up. Everything that happened, this kitchen sink is leaking. I have mold everywhere. The bathroom sink don't drain, don't drain. My doors are off the frame. You name it. Now building came back out and find the place up to twenty one thousand. So I'm waiting on my lead results from D O E as we speak. I just want to bring this to your intention. If you're not aware, the internal fraud that's happening, the people that showed us the place worked for D H S. There's two of them. So, yes, so now this is about me taking legal actions against D C H A. And this is count as verbal notice for trespass on private rights, health and then fraud as it is. Thank you. My, my wife was trying to speak, they didn't let her talk.
Okay, thank you. And we will have staff follow up with you.
So next we have Sophia the Lees, the Leesmia. And I might be saying your last name incorrectly. Please forgive me. As we're sending you a panelist request and also star six so that you can unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, awesome. All right, um, I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, um, let me see where to start. It might take a little bit longer than three minutes because it's a grave concern. Um, but I'm trying to keep it underneath two minutes. I just wanted to bring to the board members' attention what my family and I have endured through D C H A's Columbia Housing Authority is not a matter of minor mistakes or isolated communication. It's the product of nepotism, cronyism, fraud and direct retaliation carried out across multiple levels of D C H A's operations. When we reported lead, mold, pests, structural hazard hazards and the fact that the building was operating without legal business license, D C H A did not respond with urgency or compliance. Instead, we were met with delayed inspections, contradictory reports, a staff who minimized or ignored clear safety violations. This behavior reflects a culture where internal relationships, not public safety, dictate outcomes. Nepotism and cronyism play a central role. Inspectors, staff and property managers often have personal and professional connections. These relationships influence decisions in ways that routinely favor landlords and management companies rather than vulnerable families. When employees are hired, retained or protected because of who they know rather than the quality of their work, the entire system becomes compromised. The fraud appears in continued authorization of federal funds for units that clearly do not meet housing quality standards. Violations are downplayed, omitted and never recorded. Life threatening hazards are allowed to persist without accountability. And despite confirmed building findings, the building lacked business license, D C H A continued to process payments and treat the unit as compliant. But the most concerning pattern is retaliation. Retaliation that escalated specifically because I previously engaged in litigation against D C H A itself. Years ago, I slipped and fell at a D C H A property because of one of your janitors failed to put out the wet floor signs. A clear act of negligence that caused significant injury. I pursued legal action because D C H A's own employees created an unsafe environment. Ever since that case, the way D C H A has treated me has been unmistakably dis- different. Instead of meeting my housing concerns with fairness and due process, D C H A obstructed inspections, ignored documenta- documented hazards, refused emergency relocation and treated me as a burden rather than a tenant in danger. My prior litigation marked me in your system and everything that followed shows a pattern of retaliation designed to make the process harder for me and my family. This retaliation extended beyond administrative delays. It included coercive communications, lack of written response, contradictory instructions and the involvement of M P D in matters that escalated in a simple wellness check into a physical encounter with my husband at one point. Okay, these actions were meant to intimidate, discourage and silence. Okay, members of the board, this is not a simple one, simp- simply about unsafe unit. It's about culture that protects insiders, retaliates against complaints, complainants and also fraudulent practices to continue at the expense of D C families. As a matter of fact, I wanted to bring to your attention that one of your uh employees who are trying to see what we were talking about on the board ended up calling us to, well, they're, they're not even a part of the board. But they're pretending to be to try to see what we're about to talk about on this board meeting. That's how, how like nasty it is. They ended up sending me Ms. Germans, um, Pamela German, who just spoke, um, her email. That is private, the private community, violating her fourth amendment right to actually file a grievance. And the same thing that they did to her in this email, they did to me, which was calling my family, trying to see what we're talking about and then trying to mark us as uh unruly or dismiss or problematic when we're, when we're answering the questions that they're asking because they're trying to see what we're about to tell you guys about. I've had the landlord, my landlord personally, she works for the government, D O T to be exact, Pamela Moore. I don't know if you're familiar with Preston Moore. I'm getting tickets from D P W saying that I lived in this place that they saw me at this address months before I even moved to it, when my voucher was about to expire. So there's a type of corruption going through your system. And, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot going on and we really do need to get down to the bottom of it because there's a lot. I, I'm sorry, I see you wrinkle in your eyes, but it's, it's a real thing. And I actually have the hard down proof to prove everything that I'm saying, including the emails from Pamela uh German and Gigi.
Next, we're gonna move forward with Paulette Matthews. Paulette Matthews.
Hello, I'm saying hello. Hello? Can y'all hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, I already know I'm not gonna have enough time. Um, I have been off these meetings for a while, um, because of stress and mental. I heard the people who spoke before me and this is a situation that has been taking place for a long time throughout this whole journey, throughout all the board members who have been on those that I've met, those that I've been in the room with. These things have been taking place and never do the residents have enough time. I think what should happen also, and this is just something that I came up with since listening to everybody and being back on board with this. That there needs to be some type of forum or some type of board that has time for the residents to speak. Because our life journey and the things that we're going through, we're going through. The pest situation. I have dogs. I do my own house. There was a situation with that, but I'm not gonna have a time to go into that. And thank God I do do what I do and I've been doing it with my, my dogs since I've had them from Southeast to here. But it's something that needs to be considered because you have to have pet friendly stuff to be around pets. Um, I have so much to talk about in so little time. That's the problem. But I hope that y'all would incorporate something that gives the residents time to talk. Just like y'all formed this board meeting that goes on forever and we have to sit here and listen to everybody. You know, say what they say and y'all give them feedback back and forth, but y'all don't. Um, a lot of us have the same problems that one resident might be talking to, but yet you're saying somebody's gonna follow up with you. The, those situations, if it's not just a follow up, if they get a follow up, can help people while they're on the line now to know what to do. So I actually would like to call a meeting, and I don't want to be the only one in the meeting with um D C H A, with uh Mr. Pettigrew, um, Ms. Hunter and some of the people who are on this call or maybe previous calls who have had situations or and people were supposed to have been calling back and didn't call back because this has been an ongoing journey with um housing. And they're doing a good job, mind me, but it's a process and it's been a long journey with a whole lot of these things taking place. So it's not gonna be able to change within a year's time, hopefully, prayfully, a kudo too, but we see that it's not working. Um, but it can work if we all work together. And then those people who don't live, I actually with D C H A, I might be jumping the pole or whatever, the line or whatever, but y'all have contact with her. And so thi- this is housing. I don't care how we want to discriminate it or segregate it. People shouldn't have to live like that regardless of who they are under and something needs to be done. Sometimes we have to go outside of our realm just because they're not housing doesn't mean that this information can't be passed on because I don't This information can't be passed on because I don't know whether or not anybody from HUD. Even listens into these board meetings or whatever, because some of the rules and regulations they come up with. I don't even understand it. It 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 doesn't make sense. It seem like it makes it harder for us to even be able to survive. Or be able to live, um, in an environment that we should have. Not be living like most of us are living, which causes a lot of problems mentally, physically, and emotionally. And it drains you. Um, that's why I had to take a break and here I am now still overwhelmed because. I'm hearing what everybody's saying, I'm not even really speaking on what I jotted down and that always happened though, I, you know. So I I I just would like to see a change in two thousand and twenty-six because this has been a long journey for everybody. You know, everybody's going through something new or different or whatever the case may be, but one thing for certain and two things for sure. Even if it has to only be in the summer months, y'all need to go back to being in the rooms, us being in the rooms, COVID is over. And just like I've been saying earlier today, um, people were still moving around in COVID. Going on tours and all this trips and all of this. We need to be in the same room, but not just be in the same room and hear voices and don't do nothing. We need to do something because our voices are the most important voices, but our voices are always the ones that y'all cut off. Oh, you got three minutes. We used to have five. Okay, really, we need more than that. That's why I feel as though y'all need to create something. Where as though the residents can get some questions and answers and have the people that's there to be able to answer the question. Not talk about follow up, somebody gonna get back with you later and all of that because that doesn't work. That's a broken system. That's just something to get past and y'all to move on to the next resolution.
Matthews, um, we we will definitely follow up then. I'm sure, um. Mr. Pettigrew would be willing to meet with you, uh, along with, uh, Ms. Wickliffe and some board member can also attend.
So Chairman, that finishes our resident testimony. We're gonna go to our non-resident. First, I want to call on Lorenzo Brown, and I see that your hand is raised. We just sent you a promotion request to be a panelist. Um, you have three minutes to provide your testimony. And it's star six, don't need just, there you go.
Hello, how you doing? Hello, my name's, uh, my name is Lazo Brown and, um, represent my mom. Uh, at Potomac Gardens. I wanna know, do you guys represent Potomac Gardens?
Yes, that's one of our.
Okay, I mean, as you guys may know, it's been a a lot of management changes going on. And my mom has been a resident since about two thousand and three. And she's been on, you know, I believe it's a voucher, I believe. But, um, now they're saying my mom owes five thousand dollars. And I have a ledger going all the way back to, they're saying she owe it from twenty twenty-two. And they're just now bringing it up, but the old management company, um, every ledger they gave me, they told me my mom was up to date. On top of that, my mom also got forced out of her, uh. Out of her residence to a a a resident, I mean, to a a place downstairs. So apartment downstairs. And that apartment is not even, uh, suitable for certain conditions, like it doesn't have people. Uh, as far as the drainage system, none of the drainages are are leveled. Uh, it doesn't have a. A working, uh, dish disposal under the sink. It's like a PVC piping under the sink and my mom is disabled and have, uh, has MS. So as far as, um, I wanted to know how I can get it. I see Mr. Jim Derrick, Commissioner Jim Dickerson. He may be the one to get in contact to. Um. You know, I just wanted to figure out who can I get in contact with. Or like your director or your head up, because I have a, you know, a lot of connections in D C government that, you know, confer this. Or if not, you know, I I don't wanna, you know, have to use my 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 legal team, but. This situation has been going on for too long as far as, you know. You're my mom.
So, Mr. Brown, we can have the, uh, staff member contact you directly and speak to you about your situation.
All right, thank you, brother.
Next, we have Nathaniel Henry. Nathaniel Henry. Okay, I'm gonna move forward. Next, I'll call on William Jordan. Just sent you a promotion request to be a panelist. Star six to unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, how's everyone?
Hi, Mr. Jordan.
All right, uh, make it real quick, um. Park Morton Phase Two, I've sent the board and others information regarding this. I would like to get some follow up on addressing the opportunities with Park Morton Phase Two as well as some concerns. Um, that I think are more than legitimate. Um, second, uh, wanna talk about residents at non-D C H A properties. Most of the development is designed to move people from. D C H owned property to private property. But when a problem occurs, you all then say it's not one of our properties. You probably have more residents in private properties under your program than you have under your management. So I think it's clear that you have to. Change your approach and the way you do things by trying to wash your hands of or distance yourself. It is the policy to privatize. So you have to come up with better ways to address residents who are not part of your properties. Uh, fi- uh, the other is metrics. Earlier, the, uh, the Deputy Chief talked about metrics of progress for the agency. But none of those metrics were resident focused. They were agency focused. Or housing focused, but not resident focused. So I didn't hear anything about employment levels. I didn't hear anything about overall income. I didn't hear anything about anything that has to do with resident families. I measured the success of the agency by how residents are doing, not by how the agency is doing. If the, it doesn't matter if the agency is operating at a hundred percent and it doesn't impact. The quality of life significantly of residents. Uh, and then also the last issue, I think there's this debate back and forth of whether the. The agency belongs on the city's books or not on the city's books. Uh, it's important that the agency be on the city books. This is how the problem started. Is because the city. Move people just like in Iran off the books. And so it can allow demolition by neglect and that affect the agency's bond rating. And so that was part of the game and that's why we're in a problem that the agency is in today. That's the root of a lot of the problems in the city has been trying to move. Brat and brown families off the books and only count development the other way with the agency being a scapegoat. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Um, I I'd like your your comment about focusing on resident metrics and, uh. We'll follow up with the staff and see what we can do in that regard.
Next, we have Pamela Germany. Pamela Germany, I see your hand is raised. We're sending you a. Promotion request to be a panelist. If you could accept that. And then if you can press star six so that you can come off and mute so we can hear your testimony.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes. Um, my name is Pamela Germany Davis. And I'd like to thank you for your time. To, uh, take this opportunity to listen to some of my concerns. For more than a year, I've been living in a packed, ready to move out, unsafe, and medically inappropriate condition. Despite submitting multiple reasonable accommodation requests. I required a three-bedroom townhome as a part of my request to store. And the use of my durable medical equipment and to allow space for my living aid. My nurse that I received through a E P D waiver, which, uh, is here twelve hours a day, seven days a week. Um, I have a service animal as well. Um, my needs are well documented by the Georgetown Labody Cancer Center. My oncologist, my surgeon, the primary care physician. The entire case management, um, medical team and even concerned residents, families, and friends. Still, I remain in a severely crowded apartment with management refusal to maintain. Upkeep and address. These. Um, D O B violations that have been in my house for over one year. Without housing, without D C H A coming to address these issues and allow me to live in these. Uh, deplorable conditions. Despite me having stage three lung cancer and having my. A portion of my lung removed. They still allow them to to, um, use unscheduled. Um, tub glazing chemicals and pesticides. Despite, uh, my doctor writing any. I mean, despite that my doctor writing, uh, notices to them or letters to them, they ignore it. I have been in contact with a few of your constituents. Uh, Lori Barnes, to name one. Nona Eve, who I was just told that is no longer an employee with you all. Uh, and Anton Shaw, which has been totally dismissive. I've spoken with these individuals to try to gain an understanding why my condition. Um, was just marked an urgent mandatory move. To be moved from this place into another deplorable condition which. Uh, these constituents attempted to move me to in order to just say, phew, we got her out of our hair, we got her move. To move me, a fifty-eight-year-old disabled individual with complex medical. Um. Uh, issues is not a regiment to move me into a deplorable, crime-infested. Um, region that ended up on the news where a young lady would have actually died on my porch a week after if I had have accepted. Accepted that offer. The next ended up on the news where there was a police officer and a young gentleman that ran into a light post which would have been near the house where. Uh, the second house they wanted to be in and the first one that I took the award letter to and went to had bullet holes and unlivable conditions. All of these things happened with your property that you guys want me to move into. Because I am going through a, um, hardships here where I live, where housing has neglected. Um, showing face or as they say, they're medic, um, they're into the financial health of this property. Then why is it that I've been living on this property with, um, and a H VAC system that still runs in an off position? I have to pick or choose which part of my body to wash because. The hot water does not stay, uh, hot for the duration. D O B has given them nineteen infractions over the past year and a half for my unit. Not to, um, omit the fact that they have gotten constant. Um. Um, D O B infractions as by one of the, uh, previous employees of. Uh, D O B, Mrs. Shelby Leaks, who. When I asked how many infractions did the property have, she implemented to me that it's enough to go to New York City and back. Why is housing now taking the approach to try to act like they're trying to help me? You guys.
Germany, um, your your time is up, but, um, I, you know, we hear you and I'm I'm sorry to hear about your situation. But all we can do at this point is ask the staff to follow up with you and see if we can, um, help you to get out of that that situation. Thank you.
Next, we have Daniel Delpenniego. Daniel, we have sent you a promotion request. To join our panelists, star six to unmute yourself.
Yes, good afternoon.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board and everyone present. My name is Daniel Delpenniego. I'm an organizer with Empower D C. Um, I just wanted to, um, as as we end the year and, uh, have learned, uh, we finally did receive the response to the letter. That we sent, um, uh, from leaders from the properties that are slated for the I R B renovations. And we were thankful to receive that. Um, there are some questions, especially as we look at, and I won't get into all the specifics. But as we look at some changes in the administrative plan. That are are up in the air and some of the things that we heard during the meetings over the summer. Uh, don't jive with what we saw in the responses in the letter, so we hope to follow up. Uh, in the coming year with, uh, we've been, uh, meeting with tenants at the properties and we've developed. A list of, uh, concerns, suggestions, uh, that hopefully make, uh, the project a, uh, successful one. For all the the tenants, uh, there, uh, one. Major concern that I do wanna flag that we've heard from from many tenants is now that the project. Is being pushed back as we understand, uh, initially, the the understanding was that March would be the start date of renovation. Now it appears that it'll be, uh, the summer. Um, you know, folks wanna make sure that the conditions that they are living in now that need attention are addressed. Uh, oftentimes what we hear is on the properties, you know, uh, property maintenance staff will say things like. Um, they're gonna, you know, fix this anyway, why do we have to do this, so on and so forth. We we've heard that for many years in in these situations. So we hope that that, uh, you know, does not take place and that folks who need attention to issues now. Uh, are taken care of and once again. One of the things that we had hoped to do is meet with Director Pettigrew. Um, around these concerns and questions and suggestions. Uh, so we hope to follow up with that as well in the coming year to make sure. That those questions are answered and once again that, um, you know, the community tenants, of course. Um. You know, we're working in hand with the citywide advisory board. Uh, so hopefully all of these pieces that are needed to make these renovation, this renovation project a success. Are at the table and providing input, uh, to make that so. So with that, I say thank you and look forward. To another year, uh, of, uh, of challenge, but hopefully, uh, done cooperatively. So thank you and be well.
Thank you. Thank you for, um. All of your support and attention to, uh, all of the issues.
Chairman, that ends the testimony for today.
Okay, again, I just, uh, would like to thank all of you who took the time out to, um. Come before the board today and provide your testimonies. Again, many, many of the detailed issues that individuals are faced with, um, you know, we can't really address here at the board meeting. But we do follow up. Uh, I know, um, some of you say you never hear from us, but. The the end of each, uh, meeting or after each meeting, the board does get, um, a report. Showing, uh, for all of the people who called in and had issues, uh, shows what the board did in terms of follow up to those, uh, to those, uh, issues or. Or concerns. So we do hear you and we do follow up with the staff to hold the staff accountable. We're making sure that, uh, those problems are taken care of. Okay, next we're gonna go onto, um, committee reports. Uh, and we're gonna start. Uh, and we're gonna start with the committee on capital projects.
Okay. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Murphy.
Thank you, sir. Um, we uh primarily covered two topics. Uh, do you want us to deal with the resolution in committee sports? Do you want to?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
So uh, two, two primary topics we discussed. Um, one was we got a briefing from the staff on the bond-funded modernization program. The, the uh projects that we sometimes refer to as the IRB-supported projects. Um, and um, got a, got a status update on that. Um, and as uh Daniel Del Deliego said, uh. We, we are experiencing some modest delays on that, some of that which is driven by the government shutdown and some of the delays that. That that caused in taking important steps forward. It, it did make me wonder, Nicole, and his comment was a thoughtful one, and it made me wonder if maybe in early two thousand twenty-six. We could do at a board meeting, we could do an update in, you know. Some point early in the year, maybe uh David or Sheila or some combo could do a, a status update publicly. Um, uh, for, for everybody to, so they understand where, where we're going on that. Um, and the team is making continued progress. That led us to the resolution um that we have previously approved. Uh, the committee supported it in the past and we approved it at uh the board meeting. Uh, I think the last board meeting. Uh, but since then, I think our council and um the, the bank's council have looked at that resolution. And um, we've developed some tweaks to that, that I think uh in some ways are beneficial to. Uh, that the authority and in some ways are beneficial to the bank um that, that we want to bring forward today. Um, Amy, are you the right person to speak to that? Okay, great. Yeah, do you want?
Um, I told, I told David I would, I would present and then he can back up if we need some, if we need some, some additional. Um, so we are, as, um, as Commissioner Murphy said, we're essentially augmenting Resolution twenty-five thirty, the previous resolution. For the revolving line of credit um for the IRB-funded projects. Um, this was a resolution to authorize a line of credit for up to fifteen million dollars to support the project for pre-development costs. Essentially, what this resolution does is it confirms that our affiliated entity. DC Housing Solutions is really going to be the borrower on that line of credit. Um, and DCHA's role here is really to enter into a funding agreement that serves as, I'll say, sort of a backstop on that. So we don't really have a funding role, um, you know, or a role in that beyond um being a backstop if something. Which we don't anticipate anything's going wrong, but just in case something goes wrong, that um our non-federal and non. Non-restricted local, essentially our, our local and our restricted federal um revenue wouldn't be used for this backstop. So it'd only be our non-restricted revenue that could be used for this backstop. And that is really the resolution.
Gives us a little bit of flexibility if we ever end up in that situation. And then the, on the positive side, I think it takes away some of the onerous steps that we were going to have to take previously. So those have gone away. So um, the committee was supportive of this. I think DC Housing Solutions has met and supported this. Um, and so we want to bring it to the full board today uh and ask for their support.
Any, any questions from board members?
Is it, we're saying the number. Uh, resolution.
Resolution number, it is twenty-five thirty-nine. Oh, no, I'm sorry, twenty-five forty-one.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Red, no, it's out of order, right.
I had my list in front of me and wronged.
Yep, yep.
Um, so can uh, we get a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty-one?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Uh, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, uh, let's have a roll call vote on Resolution twenty-five dash forty-one.
Sure. Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Lynn Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Jennifer Reed? Teresa Sola?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
The resolution is approved.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, the only other issue, as you say, the only other issue we're, I'm sorry, I should say, one other issue we talked about was we just got an briefing update on Judiciary House. Um, which is, uh, I believe the property we own on H Street, I think, northwest. Um, and we are, uh, the, the team is uh deep into the planning for a substantial rehabilitation that will take place there. And um, we got a, a presentation on the thoughtful plan for that, including some relocation that will occur uh as near to the property as the team can identify space. So um, it was good. I think the committee felt um pretty, pretty happy with the, the good work.
What's, what's the timing for that, Nicole?
So that timing definitely, we're looking at twenty-sixth. We have the tax credits on that one as well. So I. I would say probably what, after the summer, maybe fourth quarter calendar year, third, fourth quarter for that one.
But we had already done some renovations at Judiciary.
There was a good amount of units with city uh dollars that were done for many of the units now. It's really a deep getting into mechanical engineering. Um, that's now the property in addition to rehab of units as well.
And she, um, Sheila Miller, I think, has the slide on the timeline. If you want, if we can have her send that to you, if you want to take a look at that. She, I think she probably.
You know, I knew uh that we'd already been doing a lot of.
Yeah, a lot of, yes, have been done and.
I wanted to make sure that we keep up the momentum.
Yes.
There's not no downtime.
I'll be happy to share the timeline. Thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Murphy?
Uh, that was it. Thank you.
So next we're gonna move to the Committee on Operations and Administrative Services.
We'll start with the resolutions again.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so unfortunately, we will continue to be.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
So, so uh, for benefit of the public, there, there are two resolutions, one concerning the administrative plan. Uh, admissions and continued occupancy or ACOG plan.
Right, so I'm gonna start with the administrative plan, which is Resolution twenty-five thirty-nine. Um, we have a new.
That deals with the voucher program.
Yes, with the voucher program. We do have a new updated administrative plan out for public comment. Um, it is, um, public comments are due on December sixteenth. So for those listening, please consider uh providing comments. We really welcome them. Um, unfortunately, the administrative, the current emergency and proposed regulations for the administrative plan will expire though before the next board meeting. Um, they expire on February fifth, so we have a resolution today to extend the current administrative plan. Um, while we, we, you know, while we review the anticipated comments that will come in on the new plan. So that is, that is the first resolution.
Okay. All right, so I, I know this was discussed in the meeting. Any, any comments or concerns from the board members? If, if not, then uh can we get a motion to approve Res- Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-nine? And this is to extend the uh admin plan.
So move.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, roll call vote.
Sure. Commissioner Jennifer Reed? Commissioner Teresa Sella?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then, then we will move to Resolution twenty-five dash forty, and that's to extend the, the ACOG.
Right, so this is the admissions and continued occupancy plan for the public housing program. Um, as folks may recall, the board approved a new version of that document um on September tenth at the board meeting. That document had been out for public comment from March twenty-first through July first for a very long time. Um, and um, it is set to expire on January ninth. Um, the, that version of the document was transmitted to the DC Office of Documents for Publication, but unfortunately, I believe due to the shutdown. It has, the government, the federal government shutdown, um, it has not yet been published. Um, the resolution today would essentially approve. The ACOG regulations as final thirty days after the DC Office of Documents publishes them. But would also, in the meantime, extend the emergency regulations until they are finalized because the emergency regulations are slated to expire on January ninth. Which is again, before the next board meeting. Um, so that's, that's what that regulate, resolution is.
No questions? Okay, hearing none, um, can we get a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Uh, okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Teresa Sella?
Yes.
Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jenny Reed? Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Okay, uh, anything else from the Operations Committee?
Actually, we, um, there are a lot of subject matters that are included as part of the committee. And so we reviewed updates related to human resources, IT, public affairs. Public safety, procurements and contracts. So we actually did a lot of work during the committee meeting. Um, we didn't have a chance to talk about public housing and voucher program. Um, one of the things that we identified that we would really focus in on at the next meeting was around work orders. Based on all of the feedback that we had been receiving at the block by block and, and um additional. Um, resident engagement events uh by Ms. Blackson. And then I think based on the feedback that we got on today's calls, especially related to inspections. Um, and uh, uh, units, I think next time when we touch base um in this committee and around the voucher program. I'd really like to better understand the inspection process, what um. Uh, what kind of quality assurance or quality control there is around inspections, the timelines and what our inspectors are finding. It seems also that there might be um, maybe uh a disparity in terms of how inspectors are um. Interpreting the standards. And so I'd really like to learn more about like. Training and professional development to ensure that inspections are um standard and quality across the board. So just if that's, um, if we can make sure.
Perfect.
Thank you. Um, we did also discuss that, uh, given the schedule that we would be taking a break in um.
January.
December. The committee meeting would be breaking in December, but then um, I'm assuming we'd be meeting in January.
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay. That.
Yeah, that's it. Sorry.
Thank you. Uh, so next we'll have the Committee on Resident uh Services, uh Commissioner Blackson.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, as the chair, I'm really focused on residence-driven initiatives. Um, Commissioner Sella now sits on that board also with me. Uh, we are highly focused on resident engagement and things that impact residents from voucher holders to. Um, public housing residents. I wanted to share, um, when they speak about block-by-block initiatives, was whether it's the residents. Or the, my fellow commissioners, they're talking about the initiative that's hosted every month with the directorate team. And resident leaders across all eight wards of the city, DC Public Hou- DC um Housing Authority residents. And where we discuss their issues and concerns that they have for their properties that are brought to them by residents. So as I shared, the Resident Service Committee is highly focused on resident engagement. And we actually hear the residents and what they're saying and their needs. And to go a little further, um, I've hosted four chat and chews. With all four quadrants as well as the Housing Choice Voucher Program. I recently had a chat and chew two weeks ago. Where residents have a little more time. When I say I hear you, I definitely hear you. It may not be all that we can do, but it's, it's a start. We're listening to you. We hear your needs and I definitely direct it to the right departments. And divisions that can assist you with those needs. So again, um, we're listening. We're gonna do our best to try to step it up in twenty-twenty-six. And I have one more chat and chew this year on December the fifteenth, which is for all quadrants. And I want to thank Commissioner Sella for um participating in some of the chat and chews. As well as I want to um shout out some of the staff men- members that, DCHA staff. That has been there for the chat and chews and also hearing and assisting the residents that have attended. Um, that would be Siobhan Davis, um, Fashar Tyler, Denise Govan, Office of Public Safety. Again, Commissioner Sella for attending some of the chat and chews. And all this is hosted under the Resident Service, well, Committee on Resident Services. Because we often hear residents say they're not heard, they don't have enough time. So I try to find ways to engage with the residents under that committee. Even inviting some of the same leaders you've heard speak today to um sit in on a committee meeting. Thank you. Again, I'm Denise Blackson. I could be reached at two oh two, two five zero, four four five one. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Blackson. So I, I'd like to um follow up with you on, on the issue that I think it was William Jordan. Brought up about resident me- metrics, uh, things like, uh, you know, how many residents have gotten employment. Uh, increases in income and other things that are specifically, as he said, related to residents as opposed to DCHA or the properties. Uh, so, uh, let's try to focus a little bit more on that.
You know, um, if I might jump in, that was actually a part of the conversation that we had on the committee of uh Administrative Services and Operations as well. Thinking about what kind of metrics residents would like to see and that we could reflect back to them and make sure we're including as part of our updates. So yeah, I would definitely appreciate.
Yeah, no, I know. We can heavily focus on the, on the physical units and stuff like that, but yeah, let's, let's uh. Focus a little bit more on the people, on the people's side of things.
As, and Chair Skinner, also the Office of Resident Services, their ATP program. And a lot of their programs are heavily focused um in dealing with the residents and resident improvement. I've had the pleasure of attending mostly almost every event that they host, whether it's for the youth or adults. And I just want to say, um, give a shout out to Brian Harris and his team as well. Thank you.
Nicole spoke earlier about graduations. So um, I think those kinds of things, uh, frankly, I don't think we're doing this. We're doing a good enough job in terms of just getting that information out. Uh, not only in this form, but to the public in general. So, so people know that we are focused on people. You know, that's, that's what we're all about is, is making the lives of our residents better. Uh, okay, then uh, the Committee on Budget Audit Finance? Is uh. Oh, she's gone. So, so we're gonna call the Commission to Play.
Sure, I was, um, I missed the fortunately, the portion of the meeting. Um, so we did, we did get a report from the Office of Financial Management. As well as a report from uh the Office of uh Internal Audit and Compliance. Um, the Office of Financial Management, financials, we were in good shape, I believe. And there was discussion about, uh, they're currently going through the year-end audit. Um, and as they go through the audit, there, there have been a number of the prior year findings that at this point. Um, it appears that uh many of those findings have been closed. I think they said that out of all of them, there may be about four that uh that remain.
Closed?
That have not been closed.
At most, I think.
At most, at most, yeah.
We asked for like a worst-case scenario.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, so we, we don't want to say a final number, of course, until the audit is completely.
That's great, because they were.
But it appears. Yeah. So, um, so that's, that, that's going well at this point. And this is, of course, uh, an external audit firm as well as um, that's independent. Um, that is uh hired by the uh OIG, that is also the um. The firm that works on the city's act for, uh, so this is in, in conjunction with, with the actual process. Uh, so uh, we're pleased to hear how well that's going thus far. We'll continue to report as we get more information on that. Um, the Office of Audit and Compliance uh discussed their uh, their audit plan for the upcoming year. Um, and they also met with the uh Executive Director and the deputy uh to talk about that plan and, and to look forward. So uh, that, that's the majority of what we, what was discussed during the meeting. Uh, unless Commissioner Murphy, is there anything?
Uh, no, it's. Uh, no, it sounded like the, the, uh, audit plan that you guys have had a good conversation. Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, that completes our committee reports. And thank, uh, the chairs and members of the committee for uh, working, uh, outside of this meeting. You know, this is a monthly meeting, but there's a lot of work that goes on uh, outside of the monthly board meeting. So again, I would thank you for that. Um, so the only thing left is, uh, what we call Commissioners' Time. So if any uh, other issues any of the Commissioners want to bring up today? Uh, Commissioner Clay?
One thing I, I want to shed a little bit of light on, if I could, because I know there has been discussion about this, um, you know, last year, a little bit of discussion about it this year, um, as it relates to the component unit and the whether or not the district should be reporting the Housing Authority as a component unit. I will say this is more so, uh, city issue in terms of how they do their financial reporting. Um, but I, I, I just do want to say that there has been, the determination's been made by the CFO along with the Controller of the District of Columbia, but also reviewed by external auditors that are, that are also independent, um, to make that determination based off of, um, uh, complex, what we call generally is, uh, generally accepted accounting principles. Um, and, uh, that are, that are sought forth by the Gatsby. Uh, and so this determination has been made that the Housing Authority is not a component unit. Um, and so that really impacts and that, for the most part, it is, it impacts the financial statements and how the District of Columbia reports financial information and whether or not the Housing Authority should be consolidated into the district's financials. And so that determination has been made, but not only was it made by, uh, the CFO and the Controller of the District of Columbia, it has also been, um, agreed, uh, by the city's external auditor. So I just want to, to kind of let everyone know, kind of to understand what that means.
Yeah, I know there's been a lot of going back and forth on that, so.
Yeah.
And, and there, there were sort of some curious suggestions out there that somehow this has something to do with the Housing Authority, sort of our internal stuff, and it's really not.
It doesn't, right.
It's really external issues around, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I, I think it would have much less of an impact on the Housing Authority as it would on the district.
The district, yeah.
Um, and so that's really, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure. Honestly, this is a completely different topic, if I might. Okay.
Unless, unless there's any follow-up to Commissioner Clay's, okay.
Okay. Um, you know, uh, today there were a couple of callers that, um, mentioned the practice that we've instituted of D C Housing Authority staff calling everybody that is signing up to testify as something that they experience as being very antagonistic to them and that they are interpreting as um, an effort to silence them. And this is not the first time that we've heard this feedback. Um, and so I don't know if there's either an opportunity to reconsider this practice, just given that I think this might be the third or the fourth time. Um, and on this particular call, I think we had two people indicate that that's how they're interpreting our, our standard policy. So first and foremost, for anybody that's still listening from that first part, just want to make sure that the intention of the D C Housing Authority staff that is calling you to better understand your concerns is not to silence you. It is to really, um, first and foremost, see if there is a way that we can immediately address the issue. Um, and, and then to make sure we have an understanding about why you are, you're coming forward um, to present to us. It is, it is really not something that we are doing in order to silence you. Um, but if it continues to be interpreted in this way, I wonder if, um, I mean, if it doesn't really help solve for issues upfront anyway. And, and you all are in the best position to advise us on that, whether you are able to help people um, resolve situations so that they don't have to wait until the, the board meeting. If that's not happening, then maybe we just forego that because it's, it seems to be having, um.
And, and it actually is happening in some cases. So they are able to reach out the ombudsman team and solve, um, some situations before they come here. And a lot of times getting more information, because as you know, a lot of us sit around this table, it's the first time we hear a lot of it. So.
Yeah.
It's to get us to kind of understand as well to try to.
The, the public testimony is actually part of our board legislation, actually. Um, but the, also the ability, but it's also supposed to be potentially time limited because obviously if we had public testimony that was not time limited.
I, I don't have an issue with the time.
Yeah, no, no, I was going to say, but so, so this has been the way that we've tried to bridge that gap by creating a time limit, but also having the testimony. But we do, I, I think, as Nicole was saying, we also though, I think, try to have multiple avenues for, for folks to, you know, who feel that they aren't, aren't being heard to, to get their complaints to us, whether it's to the ombudsman or through, you know, the board meetings or through outreach to various staff. So it's, you know, this is one of the venues, but, but we.
Yeah, we'll look at it and just measure.
But it, but it is also in our board legislation. I'm going to.
But I, I.
I'm going to say, I don't know if we can, I don't.
No.
Okay, so calling folks in advance to get a better sense is actually a part of our legislation.
No, no.
No, that's it.
It starts with the trying to, uh, the trying to thread a needle here. Number one, we don't want to ever say to somebody, you cannot testify, right? That's a gift, right?
Like, that's not even on such a.
And I, I. At the same time, and I have said this before, I will just say the quiet part out loud, this board meeting is not the best place to resolve really complex issues that people are facing and deserve attention to, right?
Right.
So I, I don't have any problem with the team reaching out to folks to do what they can
Right.
to try to solve their problems sooner rather than later and in a better venue, because we're, we don't know what documents to ask for and whatnot, whereas the people that are calling do. I, 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 it, I would hate, as you say, I would hate for people to interpret that as an attempt to stifle them, but nor do I want to stop that practice, because I think it is useful for people who really are in a position to help, to engage sooner rather than later.
So then I don't know if there's something about how we are engaging that's leading people to believe that we don't, we are doing it to preempt and to silence them. So maybe there is an opportunity to look at that.
Yeah, no problem. We'll look at it. Everybody can.
And let me ask this also. Legally, we can't stop someone.
I'm trying to, you know, I don't think we're trying to.
I understand, but I, I'm just saying that. I'm just saying that to be clear for anyone that's listening.
And that's not remotely the intent of anyone.
That way, is that the call in advance cannot stop them.
Correct. And that is not anyone's intent, right? Just like the follow-up afterwards is intended to, again. Right.
Softly.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
I agree with Commissioner Silla. This Commissioner Blackson, because oftentimes we hear from residents and I hear it out in the public that they feel like that call is actually to stop them from testifying or that is some type of fraud going on. So they do share that sentiment often.
This is Commissioner Harris. Um, I think a simple solution is when, in order for anyone to testify, they have to go on the website. And that website specifically gives direction. It will be easy if we put a notation to let them know that they may be notified just so we can gather this information prior to the scheduled meeting. Because we could be gathering that information to, like you all said, to make sure we have the right people in place to briefly answer or let alone get back to them. We just have to say what we mean and mean what we say. You know, they have to go to that website to register. We put something real brief, letting them know, don't be surprised if you get a call. It's just for us to get ahead of the ball for our meeting and to see if we can assist you. And in that way, we won't look like we're interrogating, they're being interrogated or being deterred. Is that something we can't do?
So that is something that we already do. That is our practice. It is on our website. A lot of different steps to our, um, testimony, our component that we are trying to bridge gaps. So the ombudsman department tests and the testimony that you see today that we go through, this has already been kind of cleaned from other people that have used the website, gone through the process, and our staff has called and had conversations with them and has resolved some of these concerns. So it does not get in front of this board. So what happens are those that we cannot resolve, those that want to be, have an audience with the commissioners, those are the ones that get elevated. But that disclosure is on our website just for us to get more information, not to deter, but just for us to get more information. And if we can resolve the issues, that's what staff does.
And so it's clear that, you know, we'll ma- we'll may reach out to you or we may reach out to you.
Well, that's perfect. That's perfect. So I just think that the next time we have a meeting and if we get any type of concerns from that, from our residents, we can take two seconds just to remind them that, hey, you know, it's on our website, there's nothing malicious, just as an F Y I. You know, and because a lot of them are not on the call now, you know, so we need to be able to give them something so that they're okay for the moment, and then we'll still get back with them.
We can always improve. Um, but a lot of times the conversation is also to help them make sure that they're able to craft with their response or how they want to talk to the board. Um, a lot of people have some technology concerns, so therefore they're not always able to use the resource of the board. So we just help, staff helps to try to bridge that gap. So we can definitely add some more language to make it even a little bit more softer for folks, so that people don't feel like we're trying to deter them anyway.
No, I agree. Um, I appreciate that you guys actually do that, because it makes a difference. Um, and I'm not at all thinking that we should not reach out. We have to be able to be, um, um, preemptive in some things like this. And sometimes they may not have to come on, you know? You may be able to solve it, and that's a win for D C H A, you know, right then and there. But no, I agree, we should do it. But we've got to calm some of the rhetoric down when we have concerned, um, residents when they're on. So we want to make sure that, hey, this is part of the process, you know, no worries. But if you're concerned, there are other steps that you can take if you felt that way, you know?
I think that it's also important to realize that we're not, you know, it starts here, starts at a certain point and the conversation goes, it, it takes a minute to get to the basic problem and to address and then know what the next step is. And I think we need to be committed to that and see how we do. But it's got to have uh, these conversations back and forth with the residents, what, regardless of, you know, where we start, hopefully we end up in a better place to try to resolve some of this, some of the things that they raise. I don't think we can do everything, but certainly direct conversation and working it through is important.
And I just want to add one additional piece, because I don't think we say this a lot, but also part of that why we can't address certain issues is because there's a privacy component to it as well. Um, and so it's not just for us or not even just with time, but it's also recognizing that uh, we also are protecting the residents, because if they come on talking about a personal issue, we can't necessarily solve it because there's certain details that we might not be able to share because we have to protect people's privacy, and that's also fair.
Well, thank, thank you for entertaining this conversation, especially because Carmelo and a couple of the other people that mentioned this as an issue are still on the line and actually listening to the discussion so that they can hear that, what our intentions are.
Okay. Anything else? If not, so, uh, we do not have a board meeting in January. So the next board meeting will be on Wednesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty six at one P M. And that'll be via Zoom. Uh, information regarding viewing or participating in the meeting live can be found at our website, W W W dot D C housing dot org. Uh, and with that, I wish everyone, uh, that's on the line, that's in here, everyone and their families safe and happy holidays and, uh, a very happy new year.
And the same with you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This, this meeting of the Housing Authority is adjourned at, uh, two forty seven P M. Thank you.
Thank you.